To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott, Heavenly Father, we just come to you in the name of Jesus' Lord, with thankfulness today, with thankfulness for what you do for us. All I ask that you just bless this meeting tonight and give wisdom as to what you want accomplished here in Jesus' body and name. Amen.
Roll call, Scott Ferguson here.
David Frerich here.
Roxanne Tufuskegan here.
All right. Everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes from August 26th?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
A second.
All right, wait a minute, I gotta write this down.
Do you keep it framed over there?
Yeah, I'm doing the minutes, so that's fine.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I didn't think you really wanted to.
It doesn't do about the recording.
Okay.
All those in favor? Next on here, we have the contract for pity and vows for the mail machine.
Can we wait one minute, 'cause I don't see that in here? Oh, here it is, yes. So, it's the regular contract, the only difference with the certified mail is monthly amount and bill quarterly, so this is a better deal, so, okay.
Basically, yeah, basically the same contract as previous, just allows us to do certified now.
Yeah, so it looks like there's two here that need to be signed. I'll keep this piece down here and go with that. There's two pieces.
Looks like it's eighty-eight thirty-one a month.
Yep.
Sixty, actually, quarterly bill of two sixty-four ninety-three for the equipment. Gladly take a moment to accept this contract and.
How many, Roger?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Give me one second. I don't know what the difference is between these two. Okay, so, actually, let me back up, back up on that real quick. So, there's two different. The one without being able to do certified is sixty months, eighty-eight thirty-one per month. The one with certified was sixty months, one thirty-seven oh nine per month. The difference between the two contracts again is being able to do certified mail.
Do you want to amend your motion there?
Yep. Uh, I think we can do the one that do certified now.
Okay.
All right. Do you have a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Give me a minute on that, too.
There you go.
Is it nh.gov, correct email?
Yes, dos at Middleton.
And nh.gov.
N H dot G O B.
You good?
Yep, I'm good now.
All right, now we have the MS one.
Yep, that just needs to be signed. That's the summary of inventory valuation, uh, robbing, that came from the assessing work or the, uh, initiative work.
Yeah, that's just like a summarized link that's attached there, too.
Yeah, that's just a information process, doesn't need to be signed.
Are you guys good if we move on, Moyer? Uh, department heads. Start off with emergency management. Who do we have here? Just you from fire? Heard anything on that? No? Okay. Just like the last thing, best of my understanding, we're still in kind of a status quo. Everything's submitted federally and we're just waiting for finalization and approval of the, uh, grant, so hopefully they gave us, this was in the spring, April, May, uh, they said it'd be about six months, so I would imagine here in the coming month or two at most, we should, we should hear something on it, so. Now I'll turn the floor to fire and emails.
I actually don't have any.
Oh, I have, I'll read it. You want to read it, but jump one. Good e- good afternoon, evening, for the month of August twenty twenty-four, Middleton Fire and Rescue had twenty-five calls. There were a total of thirteen fire calls that ranged from alarm activations to unpermitted burns. This month, they took off from training. There were twelve medical emergencies, of which seven were covered by us, the other five were covered by neighbor in towns. I want to personally thank every member of the department for making this department what we are. If you would like to join the department, they're always looking for new members, please send the chief an email or contact anyone in the department or come down to the department on Tuesdays at eighteen thirty or six thirty P M. No experience necessary, and I encourage everyone to reach out if you have any questions. Chief Michael Labalet.
Perfect. Highway Department.
All righty. Dan Phillips, V H I L.
I'm not writing it down. She didn't have it.
No, Dan just gave it.
Resident road agent, and this is for August twelfth through today's September ninth. We started cutting the shoulders on Silver Street, and by that I mean, we take the machine and take the high spot off so that the water can shed off, and we also try to ditch us up as we go. We still have a little bit more to do on that, and we'll be continuing down, uh, New Durham Road on the other side. We'd already gone up this other side last year or earlier in the year. Went over and inspected the clean of a hydraulic spill on Spruce Road, uh, that Casella, which Casella bought out Pennard, so that's our new company. One of the garbage trucks had a small hydraulic leak, and they did a great job. They hired a company came in, it was a green site. They had a soil scientist over there with a sniffer, and they did excavate out all the hydraulic oil that was spilt and, um, loaded it onto their truck and replaced the gravel. So, I did, I did get over to see that in case anybody had any questions about that. We raked and filled holes on the dirt roads as needed. Roads are in pretty decent shape. I want to try to get to them one more time before winter, um, just so that we start off with a good, smooth road and hopefully things freeze up this year instead of stay soft like they did last year. Helped set up for the election day, and this was back, uh, back in, um, in August and then, uh, 'cause we have another one tomorrow, so we helped set up again today, and I'd like everybody to get out and encourage everybody to vote tomorrow. We mowed and trimmed the lawns as needed, and, um, we had the electronics take back day, and, um, that turned out pretty good. We're still waiting for them, we're still waiting for them to come and pick the stuff up. They've had some trouble with their driver, but, uh, being in the hospital and stuff, but that should be, should be done. I think the twelfth is when they were supposed to come and take that away. We had, we started hauling out of the pit, so we, we had to go through the trucks. We got a little short in one of the taillights on truck number twenty-two, so we took care of that, uh, took care of the beaches needed. I just called today to have the chemical toilet picked up, uh, so that I would, I would imagine that will be gone before the fifteenth, uh, and we'll, we'll take the, uh, the garbage can back to, uh, shop as well. The crushers moved in, and we, as I, as I stated before, we have a pit up in Durham on Kings Highway and, um, just after the Ellis Hatch property, and, uh, we've, we've got all our winter sand comes out of there, and they crush all the rock and the gravel that's in there, so we have crushed gravel made, uh, we have stone made, so if we have any muddy spots or if we have to do some pipe work or something like that, so all that stuff is being made right now. The winter sand is, is, is all made, and they're working on the crushed gravel in the other aggregate as we speak, well, not right now, but they will be there tomorrow. They've gone home for the night. We did load the new schedule into the school signs. Roxanne had made the schedule up, and it's just a matter of going up in the, uh, in the basket that we have for the loader and then connecting to the, to the sign and loading that in there. Hopefully, I haven't been able to time it exactly, but we did, we did sync the times on both signs, so hopefully they're a little more accurate than they were last year. I think they were off like five minutes last year. What's that? Oh, yeah, so ho- hopefully with this, with the time being synced, it, it should be better. We did have the new tires put on the loader. As I had stated before, we, we got ten years out of those tires, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't get another ten out of these. We had a beaver dam in the, in the culvert over at the Cola Road, and, uh, we had a trapper come in, and he does that at his cost. He, he doesn't charge the town anything, and, uh, so he was able to trap out, there was a couple of beavers, he did get one that was sixty-five pounds, which was thrown on some big sticks and stuff, so we did get, we did get all that stuff out of there, and, and I'll tell you what, he was, uh, he was a pretty eager beaver, but, uh, so wasn't I, so we did get him cleared out of there, so now when they, when they drain the, when they drain the lake, um, you know, a lot of people, you know, you don't, you don't really think of all the steps, but knowing that the lake's going to get drawn down in October, if that beaver dam would have been there, it, it probably would have caused us some big trouble, but, so just looking ahead and looking at small details like that, a few things that we do. We had a couple of trees that came down, one on Governor's Road that we went to clear, and then we had one on Ridge Road that had fallen down with the wind, uh, some of the, some of the dead trees, uh, we cleared those off. As I stated, they, they were done screening the winter sand, so we started hauling that from the pit up, up the road and, um, hauling that down to the salt yard down here. We started hauling some of the crushed gravel, and the paving company, part of their contract was to gravel the shoulders, well, we didn't have enough crushed gravel made at the time, so I had put them off. I just called them today to let them know that the crushed gravel is, is being, is made, so next time it rains, I would say they're, they're trying to catch up. They're going to pave every day at sunny, so whenever we get a cloudy, dewy day or rainy or whatever, probably lightly expect them to be up here, and it'll be at a moment's notice. They'll probably call me in the morning at five thirty and say, hey, can we come up and do the shoulders? And I'll say, come on up, so, and they'll have the signs, the flags and stuff. Let's see. As, as we worked in the pit, we had to make a new road down in the pit, the, the road was in the middle, so basically you have an elevation up here where all the stockpiles were before, and now we'll start to work the bottom down here. So, as you work this bottom, this part disappears, so we had to make a road for the future to go down around the pit and get into the bottom of that, so we did that with the excavator, and, uh, so we're working on that right now. The roads, the roads are all done, um, they're going to finish crushing up, and we'll, we'll finish hauling, uh, the material down here, we'll put everything down here. Called R and D, already said that, uh, so we, we just started going through, uh, getting the trucks down to Dupreezo's for the, for the inspections. September's our inspection month. I don't believe we have, uh, too many expenses on that. Most of the trucks are in, in really good shape. We may have to do a couple of tires on one, and we'll do those ourselves. And then, last but not least, I, uh, I don't know if anybody noticed, there was some white marks out there. S U R came and did the dig save, and they will be starting the parking lot in two to three weeks, so I just talked to them today.
Perfect.
All right? So, all good stuff? Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
Uh, what's with our new truck?
New truck? I should have an answer. It was supposed to be getting built on the sixteenth, so hopefully we'll have that this year. We're planning on it, but we still do have the old truck if we need it, um, but I will try to have an answer for you for the next meeting. But we do have all the plow gear is all sitting there waiting to get installed, the body, the plows and all that, so as soon as the, as soon as the change, we'll be able to bring it right up there and they'll get right on it.
Great.
All right? Yep.
Any idea how long the paving's going to take? Just like on my Halloween party.
The.
For here.
Well, we got to put the drainage and stuff in first, and not just paving the thing, so it's, uh, it's, 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 it's not going to be, you know, at the end of each day, it'll be all, it'll might be gravel, whatever, but.
But don't we use the ball like the end of Rockover? We won't have a problem.
I would think so, yeah. It's not a huge job, it's only like, you know, four or five catch basins and a little bit of pipe in hand, and then some, you know, some regrading and stuff, so, but, yeah.
We have a recreating Wednesday night, so just kind of give us a little heads up that we have parking.
I mean, we got to get the parking lot done, the parking lot's out there, so if we have to, if we have to go.
No, we don't re-plan our stuff around it.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying. If the out front is busy, we can use the side entrance, I mean, you know, this isn't an open, this is not a one-day thing like that, it's, you know, it's, uh, if we want to have it done, we've got to let them do it, so, yeah, but we'll, I will keep you informed. Emails are great.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Sobel?
Good evening. Uh, August was pretty busy. We had two arrests and thirty-eight calls to service, that all the double we answered from the previous month, and motor vehicle, we had sixty-two stops, four sevens is, uh, our numbers.
Quick question for you, and I don't even know if this happens or not, though. When state police covers, do we, do you get those stats as well or no?
I checked the log, like, like, tonight, they're going to be on call after I go home, so I'll come in the morning, I'll check the Stratford dispatch log, so I'll see what calls.
Okay. I just didn't know if we included those in here.
No, that, these are just calls that we, I mean, I mean, I see maybe four calls a week, probably four to five calls average that, that they get.
Gotcha.
That someone will answer, I mean, and I'll get them the next day.
Thank you.
We don't have a report on, so.
No report from the clerk tax collector. Treasurer's report, we, uh, currently have three million sixty-four thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and ten cents in there, um, and for deposits that we took in, one hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Haven Hill?
Yes, so the next two are donations, these will just be, we're saving these for the twenty twenty-five, uh, budget, because I believe this is what they're doing, is they're requesting money for the next year, which is what part of our process, and we all know that's not getting to be that time of the year, 'cause, well, I feel like we just finished this. So, we will put this with, um, the budget, so, you know, as a con- as a consideration. Haven Hill's looking for five hundred dollars, and, uh, Stratford, Community Action Partnership of Stratford County is looking for a donation. I don't think they specific, oh, a thousand dollars, so we will put those in when we, well, we'll consider those when we're going to do in the budget for next year.
Personnel policy, still a work in progress. My hope there is that maybe we'll have that done by the end of the day tomorrow, depending on how busy it is in here, because I'll be sitting in here for the whole day. Probably about half to, closer to three quarters of the way through it. Most of the heavy lifting's done, I'm just going to get through the tail end of it, and that's just a matter of maybe some language changes, things like that. Then at that point, I would anticipate putting them out for a first read and review by the employee and then, uh, discussion after that before finalizing, so. Oh, sorry, Carl, code, code health in building?
Bill, yeah. Do you want me to get up there?
You don't have to.
You don't have to if you don't want to.
I'll stand up.
Yep.
So, it hasn't been that big of a month for building, but there has been some big stuff happening in Platoon, um, so three new homes were finished in August, um, down here and down there. There's three new building permits that, um, are coming for new homes. They haven't happened yet, but I know they're going to be done as soon as they start clearing the lots. There's also threes, I guess, so three building permits that had nothing to do with all these decks and, uh, regular repairs. There was eight other permits that consist of electrical plumbing and stuff like that, gas. Our water test for the lake came in, uh, everything was good for this recent test, they found no issues. I know some lakes in the area did actually have some notice, but it's good that we did. We have lots of questions on properties around town, so there's showing a lot of interest on people trying to come into the town, and they're trying to fit in everything. So, every lot that you can think of that you can see for sale, they're trying to figure a way to build there, so, uh, possibility of some bunch of homes coming in, small lots, but, uh, well, so.
Right, well, as I say, they have to be.
They got to go through the state, get the perk test, do all that stuff, once they get that, then they can pursue into that, then if there's any concerns with the lot still, that could be taken up with the state, and gone to our state and say, you know, this seems like this might have an issue, will this work? Because they don't always look at everything when they do the perk test, they just say, hey, water came up, or it didn't come up, okay, there we go. They don't, they don't look into too much stuff now, like they used to, but, um, yeah, so just saying that all these little lots you see around town that got for sale signs, there's a lot of questions, get lots of questions on them. Last week, there was an issue with the hydro mountain, I guess, um, somebody tripped and fell, walking here or something, because somebody decided to break the road again. I know we had sent out, Roxanne was around for that, I know we had sent out notices before about that. Is it possible to send notices out to all the residents up there again as a reminder?
You know, you buy all.
So, at, at this point, we have looked at the maps, looked at the, uh, spoke with Dan, um.
I talked to Dan, too, he said that their properties go right through the middle of the road, um, but then the property owners have to tell me different. So, I don't know, I don't know which one to believe, you know, but I tend to believe what he has to say.
The, the, all the maps we've looked at show the property line goes to the center.
So, what does our deed say, basically, is what? Our deed will say, what we, is it just an address?
So, they have it, I think, in the, in the deed, because we looked at one of them.
Yeah, I think it says right of pass and repass.
Yes. Meaning in other words, meaning in other words, each neighbor can pass and repass through the other port neighbors section.
How I understood, but, uh, I told others, this, that.
Yeah, and even on the tax maps, it, it doesn't show a right of way, or a set aside.
But the original, the original map, I guess, did show the road, but it was like, times have changed, so.
Both our phones going off.
But, so then I guess no, the answer is no? That's what I was just asking, because I, I said I would ask, and I asked. Um, now, do you guys have any questions for?
I've just got one tidbit for you. Planer builders did put in for the driveway permits up here, and I, I noticed that they put the drivers in.
They started coming to a woman.
Yeah, so they've got the permits in already, and everything looks good there, so I just figured I'd let you know that they did put in for driveway permits and.
Hopefully, one of the lead term, Drew, me and the culvert and after.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, those, those look a lot better than, uh, the other one, and the other people did move in, and I told them whether to put them in lots and stuff, the height and all that, so.
Perfect.
Looks like it's, uh, looks like it's.
Looks like they're all settled in over there.
Yeah.
I got a question. Does this tell me those, um, noise ordinance?
The book doesn't have anything specifically involving a specific noise ordinance? It does have a statement talking about anything that, um, is like, you can, it talks about like the noise that you can feel, like corruption or explosions and stuff like that, but it doesn't, it doesn't have a decimal rating or a time or anything like that, really.
Most cities do have, um, ordinances like that, and they're at, they're seven o'clock. Most, most ones do. That's, that's what I encountered.
How can I get a copy of that?
That's in the ordinance book.
Well, how can I get a copy of the ordinance?
I believe that's online.
I'll look, I'll look. It's online, you want the documents, planning boards, or in the law, that zoning ordinance?
Oh, no, 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 this would be, this would be like.
Oh, I know.
You've got all the town ordinance.
Yes, 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 yes. Sorry. And I think I said zoning ordinance.
They're, they're right in Kim's office.
Okay.
There's a book right in there with all of them.
Great. Thank you.
God, it's getting dark out.
Just one other quick thing that's not on the agenda, just for an update, uh, it's the boiler over at the municipal office. That project has quasi been started, uh, they've removed the oil tank at this point, and, uh, I've spoke with them, and the anticipation is that work will begin, uh, at some point this week, if not the first, but next week. They're anticipating a couple days, maybe two days. So.
What is that?
To replace the boiler in the building. Hmm?
I said that's a permit.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think the town has to pull permits.
So, um. Next, public comment? Bonnie?
Um, I missed the last meeting, so I just want to say a huge thank you to you, um. Um, I missed the last meeting, so I just want to say a huge thank you to you, um, the Highway Department, Fire Department, Police Department, John with his red hat van, um, the food trucks, the drone guy, my volunteers, um, the kids that helped us out with the games, everyone that came, um, to our open celebration. We appreciate you all coming and helping us out and, uh, yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, it was, hats off to you guys too as well. It was well organized and seemed to roll very smoothly and.
Well, except for the incident with the food trucks, so we really, really appreciate the guy guys filling in and helping us out.
It was fun. We had a lot of fun.
And if anybody missed this one, they need to come to more recommend because they have all been amazing so far.
Well, we have a meeting Wednesday night, 6:00 PM here, um, and we'll be working on Halloween Christmas stuff, so we're always looking for volunteers.
No experience necessary.
No experience. I had ideas, if you could help once, twice, all the time, whatever, we'll take what we can get. It was like six of us putting all this together and four of us up there for it, so, um, it's a lot of work, but we had fun.
Perfect.
I did find your bean bags, the little bean bag toss, they're right on top of the wellhead out there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going out to do the sign. I found one and I looked, I found a bone. Oh, we're missing those. But they are, they're right on the, uh, wellhead out there. Yep, yep.
Any other public comment? Not hearing any, I will.
I will make the motion to adjourn at 7:07 PM.
Sir? Ten seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.